I would like to give Crystal Hollis some advice.
I'd like to give the flag of the United States of America and to the great love of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, you're good. We thank you for your mercy. We ask that you would guide and direct our discussion today and that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions for the community. We ask all this in Jesus' name.
I will make a motion to approve today's agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Two seconds. If there was a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Assistant comment? Hear the wind blowing. It looks like we have done, so we will proceed on. This time, I'd like to give council a chance to declare a complex or communication we've had that might influence our ability to consider today's agenda items impartially. Have the appointments or proclamations. I will mention that next meeting, I'm going to make a proclamation for the minting tree. We've got 374 children on the tree this year. They're in need of gifts and just want to make sure that everyone in the community is aware of that and can pitch in and get that taken care of. So I will be doing that in the next meeting, but I do want to mention that the other day, consent agenda. There was an item in there. Do you have any questions on that or regret on that? Can you motion to approve the consent agenda?
We can motion to approve the consent agenda.
Keep the motions. We're in seconds. If there was a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have unfinished business. That brings us to new business. We're rolling. Sixty minutes. We've got fifty, eight minutes left.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, it is my pleasure to introduce this item of new business. Just a little background, if you recall, back in 2014, the city began having discussions about investing in some infrastructure on the north side of the highway with the concept of the North Park. Fast forward five years, in 2013, the city acquired land in a land swap plus cash agreement. We take into the wildlife park to acquire some acreage. And then add another five years to that, and in 2024, we finally began the process of planning to build a new North Park. So ten years in the making, and we are closer today than we ever have been before, which is really exciting. This is kind of a multi-phase approach. What's gone on over the last year has been really circle around community engagement. You're going to hear a summary of that community engagement from our presenters here. Gathered lots of feedback. We've really utilized the will of the community to frame this plan. So what you're going to see is the master plan for the entire park property. We didn't anticipate building it all in one phase or in one year. We see this as a multi-year, multi-phase approach. The priority from the beginning was that this reflected the will of our citizens, but also that we wanted to build a premier destination playground that our citizens could enjoy. And if that meant taking a little longer to build it out over a series of years, then we would go that route instead of cutting corners and maybe doing something a little more cheaply and a little more quickly. So culmination of all that work is going to be presented today. I'm really excited to introduce my colleague Lance Onstop with Professional Engineering Consultants. He'll introduce his colleagues, and they will share the presentation and with the summary results. Thank you.
Who else might fix the feedback issue? Thanks, Greg. Mr. Mayor, council members, for the last few months, we definitely have had a lot of fun working on this project. So personally, as a kid who grew up on South Cedar and Bean Street, projects just mean a little bit more when they're in your hometown. We get the pleasure of working kind of all across the country, but they just mean a little bit more. And we spend probably a little too much time on projects when they're in our hometown. So as a kid, I remember riding my bike between the tool and the truck stop that's no longer here. I definitely remember Old Town Goddard before Linear Park was even in existence. So we're excited about this project. We're excited about the future of Goddard generally. So now that I've got all the personal stuff out of the way, professionally, in addition to myself, you're going to hear from my colleagues here. So Callie Segna from our landscape architecture team at PDC and Vince Hayes with Gravity Works Architecture. So in addition to us three, we've been working hand in hand with various members, a lot of the old professional staff, with the park planning committee that was appointed by you all. And as you'll see here in a few minutes, literally hundreds of members of your community in one way, shape, form, or the other. So what we're planning on doing today is we'll walk you through kind of a summary of the engagement that was a major input into kind of a product in which that we'll show you guys today. From there, we'll show you the entire nine-plus acre master plan. We'll dive in a little bit deeper on those preliminary phases. Callie will actually walk you through those. Vince will then walk you through some of the vertical improvements, the building improvements included in those preliminary phases. We'll end with everybody's favorite, which is the cost estimates, and then we'll kind of open it up for any sort of questions or discussion that you guys have for us. But at any point in our presentation, don't feel like you need to wait until the end. We're very used to kind of just getting told to stop or being interrupted and ask a question and a pop's in the ring, and that way you don't have to remember it all. So the community engagement phase of this project was definitely robust, in our opinion. It's not all the time that we do projects like this where it's evidently clear that the city staff and elected and appointed officials really want to be very conscientious about really figuring out what the community wants. So this is just a listing of the community engagement events. So we started in May and July with a couple different public open houses hosted right next door. You'll see the number of attendees, the approximate number of attendees to the right. We presented at Eisenhower Middle School. I believe that was the district retreat. Obviously, there was a number of attendees at that. So we actually set up our boards, and I'll kind of show you what the programming was, and funneled everyone through it on their way to lunch, so they had to come see us before they went to lunch. So a little bit of strategy there. And then we were at Meet Your Teacher Open House Night at Discovery Intermediate School, of which my fifth grader, I made him, we were there, because that's where my son goes to school. So I made him participate as well. So lots of kids, when you're designing parks, it's real nice. So the Eisenhower Middle School, the retreat, we got a lot of adult input, right? Not very often do we see adults use playgrounds, so, but I mean, they know what their kids want, so it's important to get that feedback. But every once in a while, when you're designing a park that has a playground component, you might want to engage those that are going to use it. So that was a really good add-in to the engagement process. Then we had an online survey that was available throughout, so that way if we didn't happen to intercept somebody at one of these others, we at least provided an opportunity for people to provide their feedback in other way. So in addition to that, the design team and members of the staff and I believe Councilman Taylor got to tour some sites in Kansas City to get some design inspiration, to see some things that have been done there. And as of last week, I think was our last, but intermediate, intermediate between, or throughout the process, we worked with the park planning committee appointed by you all in the ultimate design of this park. So over months, hundreds of community engagements, attendees, and a lot of feedback. What we're going to present to you now for the Goddard North Park, this is really kind of a piece of the input that has resulted in what we'll talk about now. I got ahead of myself. Just so you know what we were asking, so it makes a little bit of sense when I show it to you. At each one of these engagement events, including the online survey, we wanted to really kind of hone in on themes for the park. So these were the options, the enchanted forest theme, farm exploration, stories of a play. Through the engagement and through working with the park planning committee, what you'll ultimately see is a combination theme between enchanted forest and farm exploration. So there's a little area, part of this park, that we'll call out, that we wanted to provide some opportunity for yard games. So as your kids are playing in the playground, there's things for non-kids to do. So we asked what types of yard games were most desirable. You'll see on the master plan that both ping pong and cornhole were the leaders there and have been accounted for in the master plan. And then all the things that make up a park, we wanted to kind of get an idea of what was most desirable. So turf hills, unique swings, trampolines, most of these things in some way, shape, or form have been provided for in the first phase of the park. So at the northeast corner, so the corner of 183rd and Maple, we presented four different options for what types of amenities, park amenities, were most desirable. Dog park, skate park, mini golf, or pickleball. As you'll see in the master plan here, we had provided space for both a dog park and pickleball courts. So now getting into the master plan itself, as you can see, this is the entire nine acres, nine-plus acres. So it's just kind of starting at the far northeast portion of the properties where you'll see the dog park down towards the south of that little area, some parkin' and some lit pickleball courts. Crossing that pedestrian bridge back to the west is kind of the most intensive built portions of this park. So you'll kind of see the roof of the structure that Vince will get into some more details in, and then that bluish area is really where you're starting to see the playground area. The green spots that you see here, so the two that are kind of on your right are going to be your cornhole plaza. And then the one that's just below it, a little bit to the left, is an open yard area. We provided to, just to the left of the building, the main building itself, there's some further shade structures and some accounting for food trucks. So there'll be power that'll be brought into that location. Food trucks can come park there, have power available, and serve whoever's using the park. Directly below that, the first structure on the pond is what we're calling a boathouse. We haven't gotten to much level of detail of planting on that phase yet, but we think that there's a number of different opportunities that could present themselves in that. So continuing a little bit down, a little bit to the left, you see an amphitheater provided there with open lawn seating. And then obviously, the appropriate amount of, it was conceptually, the appropriate amount of parking in the northwest corner. The remainder of the site is an existing pond that is actually holding water as of this morning, so, which is good, and a pathway around the pond. So the way that we would kind of anticipate the phasing of this project is that center north portion, the main structure and the playground, and the yard games and portions of the shade structures would be what we're going to call, what we're calling Phase 1A. It's the primary preliminary phase. The northeast portion, the pickleball courts and the dog park are what we're calling Phase 1B. We do think that there's an opportunity to deliver those two phases together. That's something that we'll have to work out in the future phases of the project. It is also, one of the reasons why we've done that is we worked with the city staff to actually submit a grant application in September to the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And working with your staff and with state staff, putting together what we thought was going to be a competitive application, we selected these amenities in the northeast core of the property. So depending on how that grant works and how everything shakes out going forward with the project, that's why we're calling it Phase 1A. And Phase 1B can be delivered together, but can obviously be delivered at different times.
Lance, could I elaborate on that point?
Of course.
One of the reasons we had to apply for Phase 1B on the grant is because of the types of projects that that program funds did not align with Phase 1A. Otherwise, we would have applied for Phase 1A funding, so that's why we went after Phase 1B. It's a, Phase 1B, you'll see the estimate is about $850,000. The grant that we applied for is 50% of that. So if the grant's awarded, it'll be a blessing, and we will rejoice. However, we'll have to get a little creative as far as how we would have to package those two together. And they require some refining of Phase 1A to a lesser scope, depending on what we decide for budgetarily speaking. So everything you've seen today is very, very high level. I don't expect it to be the end product when we get to the point of actually doing. So I just wanted to couch Lance's comments with a little more information.
So what specifically makes it eligible for 1B? What's the difference? What's called, obviously?
Oh, Lance is more apt to this program than I, and he's the one that advised me that 1B would be better aligning with the mission of the grant than 1A, so let him have it, Lance.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a, I don't think it's necessarily a question of eligible versus ineligible, but of competitiveness. So playgrounds traditionally, I mean, there's ways to design a playground that have been and would be competitive in the LWCCF grant application process. But generally, they're looking more favorably upon non-playground applications. So pickleball obviously serves a wider population than slides and rope climbing and the things that we associate with playgrounds. As does, there's been, we were advised from the state that there is not public dog parks or pickleball courts on the west side of the Wichita metro area. So it's really a question of competitiveness. So if you're going to have a maximum award amount of half a million dollars, where's the best place to put that in terms of ultimate competitiveness? Because applying for grants is one thing, right? Being awarded and winning grants is a completely separate thing.
Do we like to win?
That's right.
I guess the reason I'm raising my question, let's say we decided to substitute a skate park for a dog park. To me, would that change the grant?
It would, yeah, you'd have to reapply for the grant.
There's always some room, and the worst they could ever do is say no. The best they could do is say yes. If we called them and said, hey, you know, we really don't want this for some other reason, would you guys be okay with substituting? I mean, I think it would be pretty hard to get them to agree with that. If it's small tweaks, you know, like let's say we really downsized Phase 1A. One of the things they liked about our project was Phase 1A and 1B is in excess of $5 million, and so there's a ton of non-federal match. I mean, that $500,000 is a very small percentage compared to the total cost of 1A and 1B. So instead of substituting the dog park for a skate park, the grant board would likely be more attracted to seeing us change the scope of Phase 1A.
Yeah, I mean, the other implication on that particular grant program is just timing. You know, it's open once a year, and I think maybe we'll hear, we should hear something within the next month, but official awards don't actually, aren't made until, I believe, August.
They emailed me yesterday, yesterday, yeah, it would be yesterday, and said that they would let us know first of December. The official announcement's not till August, but 100% of the awards that are announced during this fall period have made it to the official announcement in August. So if you hear about it in December, you could probably take it to the bank that you're good to go.
In last grant comments, I do think it's extremely favorable that they reached out to the city and wanted to tour the property in advance of all of that post-application, so fingers crossed. Okay, so boathouse is an amphitheater. Pond and pathway, the pond is going to need, and then you'll see these kind of split out as phases when we get into the costing portion of our conversation. The pond and pathway phase is pretty high level at this point. It's a pretty large number. We don't really know exactly what we're going to get into when we get into that pond, but for water quality and a number of different reasons in which we would want to design towards, it's probably going to need some dredging. And that is a highly variable project from time to time, all of the time. So that pond and pathway phase may or may not include this island. We've got some ideas on how that would work with that dredged material. Again, all contingent upon what we find there. So you're basically seeing Phase 1A kind of in the center, the northern center, then 1B, a boathouse phase, an amphitheater phase, and then a pond and pathway phase.
Part of our scope with PEC2 is they owe us a geo-tech report, which I've heard some highlights from that. I haven't seen it yet, but talking about the favorability of soils and stuff in that pond area. So that'll be helpful as we move into the next steps. For future phases of all of the pond.
Isn't there money available from Kansas Parks and Wildlife if we had an urban fishing pond there?
The community fisheries assist, are you tired of hearing from me, Mayor?
Yes. What am I supposed to say to that?
The community fisheries assistance program is one that I have a vast amount of experience working in through my time serving a previous community. But the state makes available two-to-one grants, maximum award of $40,000 a year, to go towards improving public lands that have a fishing component to them. And as a part of that, they call it C-FAP. They also come and stock the pond with all kinds of fish, bass, catfish, croppy, saugeye. And then they will come out and catch the fish and measure them and things like that. And they will actually move the fish around amongst the other waterways that are in this program to make sure that you don't have too much of any one species or, you know, those kinds of things. So I know in Sterling, we ended up having an overabundance of croppy. You could catch huge croppy in that lake. And they upped it to like, you're allowed to catch 50 at a time because there's just so many of them. It was awesome fishing. So they'll actually come out and check on the biology and stuff like that. It's a really awesome program. And I think one of the reasons we could win this grant award is because we have that pond there. They like the potential of having the CFAP program here in Goddard.
Have we got our soil test made?
I've heard the highlights of it, but I haven't seen it, and it's been a long time since we had that discussion. So I couldn't comment on it with a high level of intelligence at this point.
Neither can I, so we're, last I heard, we were, we've been, we've done the site work, but I haven't seen the finalized GMP quarter four either. We'll get it when we get them. So see right now, we don't even know.
If I remember during our conversation, there weren't high, there wasn't a high level of concern, so I wouldn't worry about that too much.
No, and the way that we did the opinions of probable cost for that particular phase was assuming the worst results. So just depends on what you do with the dredging material. So we've accounted for the worst-case scenario, fingers crossed, that it's not that scenario, and it'll be cheaper. But yes, and last comment on the fisheries, so I've been contacted directly twice by the state manager of that program, asking about the status of this project. So they seem excited about that possibility in the future too. So I told them next year, whenever you guys are ready. So I'm going to stop speaking. I'm going to turn it over to Callie from our landscape architecture team. So she's going to walk you through some of the prettier pictures of what we're calling Phase 1A and Phase 1B.
All right, we're going to be giving you pictures of the park. Hopefully, they're fun to look at, and I'll try my best to explain them, and if there's any questions, let me know. This is a really nice rendering of the park. In Phase 1, this is what we're looking at, mostly the playground. We have the ping pong and cornhole, some shade structures and gathering spaces, and just a few plantings mixed throughout to kind of keep with our forest themes that we'll talk about. The main part of the park is going to be this custom feature that is more like an enchanted farm type scenario. It's not a literal farmhouse, but we have it in a more enchanted theme. It's a fully custom play structure. This whole uncovered portion of the park is going to be like the five-to-12 year play range. We try to incorporate areas for each age range to play. We've got the mounds and the little steps on the mounds, lots of different aspects to play here. Just another angle of this. We've got some slides. Throughout these bed spaces, we'll have some trees to kind of hold in that forest theme, custom farm equipment, play structures. Again, you can see the steps going up the mound and that main structure there. In the background there, under the cover is where we have like the younger children's play areas. This is kind of just a poor hole looking into the covered area. We've got some gathering spaces, a little area for swings. The swings are, we have inclusive swings. You can do the friendship swing, which everybody can use. We've got some standard swings, and then there's some tire swings as well. And this is a covered play area, so we've got the two-to-five here, and then we've got 18-month to 24-month. Mixed in are areas where everybody can have fun. There's a spinning carousel type thing that is inclusive here in the corner. We'll have trampolines set into some of these areas as well as turf play games that will be made in the turf. Some covered seating areas so people can hang out. This is adjacent to the food truck area as well. So food trucks are parked and you can have a place to sit and eat while you're watching people play. Just another few of that.
In terms of size, how does that compare with the pavilion we have over in your park? How many is it?
It's quite a bit, about twice the size.
Twice the size, okay. Let's try and get some idea of size.
Good question.
This just kind of looks at that cornhole area. There'll be a couple ping pong tables out there as well. And then these bar spaces, you can stand or sit and have a drink while you're playing with your friends. Added some covers in there as well, but actually being the rest of the covers. This is just another one of our plans here, just kind of showing us where the different areas are. I believe about the younger play areas, the five-to-12, our shade structures, swing areas, just some of the elements of the play.
One of the things that had come up during one of our, a couple of our more recent committee meetings was, I, once we get the, all the pretty pictures and stuff, I start thinking from a utilitarian perspective of maintenance and vandalism and those kinds of things. And like those, the cornhole boards, those are going to be a fixed, some of the stuff you see in the renderings, that's not exactly what it's going to look like. Remember, this is conceptual, not actual at this point. Like the bar top here with the stools, we talked about, these need to be affixed seats, whether it's like a concrete U or something. That way, you don't have delinquent people picking those chairs up and throwing them into the pond. I think I meant to say delinquent. Same thing with the picnic tables and stuff like that. I mean, we want to fix structures. The ping pong table will probably be a concrete situation so it can Same thing with the picnic tables and stuff like that, I mean, we wanna fix structures, the ping pong table will probably be a concrete situation, so it can survive the weather and also don't have to worry about it being moved around and thrown around, any of the seating and stuff, I wanna see it fixed, and think about when you're cleaning and those kinds of things too. You know, we don't want stuff to just be kind of tore up and thrown around and all that sort of thing.
So, there's no other comments, Ben's can talk about the structures a little more.
The, as far as the building is concerned, really more about the park and play area and everything else, rather than this building project, so, the goal here was to provide us with a shady, and be kind of a unique structure, kind of a natural garden in terms of enchanted notion is not, not, and you can see that come through in some of the, some of the renderings of the slopes, has an agricultural theme, a chip group, a play on that, and that you've got two of them coming together, and then the angular columns and stuff like that. So, our goal really was to create shade and do it in a unique way, rather than necessarily a building, so that's what this does. The roof of this would be, in some cases, it might be solid, in some cases, it might be perforated, so it allows filtered light to come through, we've done that in several shade structure-type projects, it really is a nice, nice effect. And then the shade structures to the outside of them, around the pickleball and around the picnic tables, a similar type look that, that keeps, keep with the theme of what the shade is to be, but the building as itself is really quite small inside and underneath the shade structure. It is a twenty by forty, if you will, enclosed room that you could lease and have, have small gatherings there, with overhead doors, both to the playground area and also to the, to the south of that is more kind of an adult, not playground equipment, but the covered area for for those kind of activities, restrooms, the three, the three rooms there to the face to the southwest, those are gender-neutral restrooms, kind of family-oriented, but have, would have changing tables and those kind of things in it for that, the other one is storage and some mechanical space associated with the rest of the building. Pretty straightforward, as far as the building is concerned, back to some, and how it fits into the rest of the site, you can see, it is rather large, it might be two and a half times the size. I frankly, I don't know the dimensions of that one.
Oh, just trying to give you an idea.
But it's, it's a good-sized shade structure at this point. Back to what the theme and the look of it is, we wanna take, we wanna, we see it kind of as a heavy timber type structure. We love it, it's kind of soft in that regard, we have, that's the idea of the building as a whole.
So, with, sorry, with this building, are we able to, or, and/or planning to do what we did with the pavilion, as far as putting like, the heaters in?
We don't have any, we haven't talked about that at all, now, when we get into full design mode, those are elements we can discuss. We're always trying to figure out how to save money, that's admin. But yeah, that's, we haven't discussed that, but it's an option, that radiant heat, we don't use that that much at the pavilion, we use it for movie nights, Christmas on Main Street, in a cup, in private events, you know?
I'd be more like, so like, for our daughter's birthday in March, we're planning to rent a pavilion, but I'd let her have a playground that has a little bit of heat when it's in the forties, the a big concrete roof, so.
Agreed, and you know, we, we did my son's first birthday at this pavilion, and I think because I had a key to the closet, I was able to turn the heat on. I don't know that other people that rent it privately are asking to get the heat turned on or are doing that, so, and I'm like, do I have to?
The knob's been pulled outside.
The what?
The knob has been turned, put up the outside of the building, so you can turn it on at any time.
Yes, I didn't know.
So, we were just cold for no reason.
Closed now to the wind, I don't know how this would do with it.
That's true. We can't keep it in, contained.
We, we, back into some of the design details, we can, some of these bays could have have a screen, some current wind protection on instead of it being open. If you ran it this way, being open, just primary global shade, other than wind protection.
And you have the rentable space too, so, play outside a little bit, go, go to the rentable space and warm up, you know?
Yeah, putting those, wind screens on, it started the impede between come and go through, really wanted to be very visible through there, so, but those things are often, just like Craig mentioned, it's, we get into the detail of the final design, all that stuff's on board.
There's a lot of heavy timber out there, trees, vegetation, so, wind block should be pretty good too, in a lot of the areas.
We start to see, certainly from the north, you can see on the landscaping plans, the trees, some of the, directing some of the north wind as much as possible in the site plan layout, but yeah.
This park will have a ton of character because of the existing trees, I mean, there's a lot of mature trees out there, and during our tour to Kansas City, the parks that have that element, I thought it just, it made it even another level of more appealing to be there and stay there for a while, because you get so much shade, and it just looks nice too.
Yeah. Glad, glad, so, pick up the mayor?
Keep going, Ben, if you want. I guess I'll give the call this portion, so, yeah, no, and that's one of the first things that you, we would want to do, as designers, when you get into the whole construction document process, is yeah, well, once you do the survey, and you find out exactly what types of trees, how different trees are, is to come up with a preservation plan for those trees, so, about the, nothing makes me a little bit more, you know, more agitated than having a site like this, and somebody comes in and cuts them all down, so they can, so it can be easier, a little easier during construction, so, parks with trees tend to be a little bit more successful than parks without trees, so. Okay, pretty pictures aside, we've got some costs associated with this project, so, again, using these phases, the detailed opinions of probable cost are in your guys' packet, so you can see them, kind of line item by line item. We'll touch on just the total cost, so these costs that you see not only include construction, but they also will include a fairly healthy contingency, so the difference between the way we do this, that opinions of probable cost and estimates, construction estimates are typically a little bit different. Estimates are generally something that we'll be doing as we're doing those construction documents, actually designing it, and it's kind of an iterative process, we'll assess kind of an estimate at, let's say, thirty percent design, sixty percent design, ninety percent design, and you start to refine that as you go, again, still leaving, you know, room for a contingency in there. But here, there're gonna be pretty high-level opinions of probable cost, they'll include the contingency, they'll include design fees to get you to those construction documents, and then they'll also include some contractor costs. So, what you're seeing here is total cost, not just construction cost, so, Phase 1A, which is the structure that Ben's talked about, and kind of the intensively produced playground areas that Callie walked you through, is four point four million. Phase 1B, in the northeast corner, which is the lit pickleball courts, the dog parks, a shade structure, and some additional parking, is eight hundred and forty thousand. The pond and pathway phase, which we talked about previously, is getting a fairly large number, depending on what actually needs to happen to remediate that pond to an appropriate amount to get the quality that you want, is approximately three point six, and then the amphitheater at one point two, and the boathouse at one point five, roughly. So, at this stage of the design, at the conceptual schematic phase, all in, we're thinking for the approximately nine-plus acre park, as we've shown you today, is about eleven point six four million dollars. So again, detailed estimates are included in your guys' packet, and we can definitely answer any questions about anything that park is in there, but that's where our opinion of probable cost for this park is currently.
What's that island add in?
So, that is included within the three point six million, so I have to, I don't have that detailed estimate in front of me, and I don't know if we called it out specifically, but it's, it's within that number.
See, that skate park is that island?
Skate park on the island? That'd be pretty sweet.
Possibly, well, right.
If I can set in Los Angeles, let's skate park, looking at the ocean.
I, how does, how does a dog park work exactly, like, I mean, is there, are they closed in? Are people responsible for cleaning up after their own animals?
Yes, so, it will be fenced in, so, it'll be contained, and you can see some of those two kind of gray knockout areas on the north side of the dog park, which is, this thing have a yeah, here and here, so this is the dog park, so this will all be exterior fence, and we're showing one fence down the middle too, because typically we'll wanna split between small dogs and large dogs, so they're not having conflicts, which, I'm sure, there's dog owners here, sometimes, they do, my dog doesn't necessarily like small dogs for some reason, so, I don't really want her playing with them. A lot of times, we might actually do a three, a three-section split in there, depending on the surfacing, so that way, we're always having one section that's not being played on for a growing season, just because as you can imagine, that turf gets kind of torn up, but yes, all fenced in, generally, park users are responsible for cleanup and behavior of their home dogs, and, and there'll typically be some water stations, and obstacles, and boulders, and things that they play in in there.
Citizens love dog parks, they adore them, I've worked in several communities, I've done community surveying in other communities while a consultant at Wichita State, and it almost always comes back as the highest voted thing, when you set it up against other amenities, we saw the same exact thing here, I mean, it was, I think it was ahead of pickleball, I could be wrong, but citizens absolutely love them, and when they build them, they're used, I know people that go to them all the time. City staff, on the other hand, it's definitely a burden to maintain them, I think if you talked with parks and rec people in other communities that have these, they'll tell you that they're a nuisance, you're always getting complaints about them, part of that's because they're highly utilized, so there's a lot of traffic going through there, which means more complaints, police, or whoever, you know, is dealing with animal control, they're gonna probably have a few calls a year for incidents out there, so, there's some pros and cons to it, just like with anything else, that'll, you know, have to be worked out, but I can tell you without a doubt, they are adored broadly by citizens, as we even saw in this process with receiving feedback, when we, you know, did the voting and surveying and stuff, so. Just something to keep in mind, that it, if we go that route, which, of course, that's in the plans, that's part of the grant we applied for, there's gonna be some staff burden involved, and we anticipate that anyway in association with this project, we know we're gonna have to have another park attendant, but what's new, we're growing, we need more staff for a lot of areas.
The last community I worked in, after, you know, tens of millions of dollars of park improvements, by far the most popular used portion of any of those projects is the dog park. So, people love dog parks. But yeah, and I can speak from the public.
People with dogs.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a, that's a good point.
And I've talked to three different individuals that are involved in maintenance, and with all parks departments and things, and there's a tremendous expense there too, because you talked about the wearing down of the grass, well, you might have to, if you're cycling through the thing, you might have a third of it torn up at any one time and have to reseed it, the expectations of people that have dogs is that that dog park's gonna look like the AstroTurf on Arrowhead Stadium. And dogs are difficult to control, and complaints about the park itself, and complaints about the dogs, I'm sure Chief is real excited about settling disputes in the park, probably won't do it, but then they're gonna call Burke, and that's Burke to do it, I think we really need to take a long, hard look at the, the cost of that, based on the people that run it, and I, I've had two dogs, I've had rabbits, cats, fur balls, whatever, I'm not against having dogs, but I just don't think we need to gloss over the ongoing maintenance cost of that particular item, so, I just wanna say that.
In front of the amphitheater, is that where the food courts, where the stender trucks would park?
Yeah, these yellow kind of boxes here are simulated, the trucks.
Okay.
So, that's why it is located there, so, in the interim, you can obviously, before this is built, it's only gonna serve all of this area, but generally, you know, if you guys are having an event here, then they would be able to serve out of both sides, essentially, so, it will provide services during amphitheater events, but let's say, the amphitheater's ten years away, it never happens, it's still slightly appropriately to handle these sort of events in this first phase.
And would you want enough to get plenty of traffic in the building?
Yeah, so, and we'll, you know, when you get into full construction, like, we'll put, you know, truck turning templates, and you're looking at the actual radii of the curves and all of that, but conceptually, yes.
I know that in the original Phase 1 drawing that I'm looking at here, maybe it's changed, but there's a dotted line that cuts out part of that number three parking lot. You know, it might be better if we're gonna go ahead and pave the parking lot to really do the whole thing. Going back to that, I mean, that's, then the other comment I would have is if, if we end up not doing 1B, that maybe there'd be some way to put a temporary loop on the west side of the drainage area, so that people could walk on further out, and come back around possibly, I mean, I don't know the distance there between where the playground and the, the outside of the playground ends there in the west, and the the water, the tree area, or the flow point is, I don't know how much distance there is there, would it be worth the spend of money to put a loop through there, so that it created a little bit lighter walking path? Or even if you did a gravel thing, another thing would be, is made as a part of this, we could dig up some gravel in Phase 1 and actually put a gravel trail around the pond, so that it could be used as a walkway, a little bit more like Warner Park in Manhattan as opposed to urban West Wichita, but just a couple thoughts ahead, looking at it.
Yeah, I think we're, it's a good point on the parking lot, so the parking lot, I didn't differentiate that, so we would plan, it's conceptually, to build, I think we draw it kind of, you know, maybe this portion, the southern portion, we're only being constructed when the amphitheater comes, to provide some additional parking, but those are those types of things, where as we're getting, you know, further into costing and further into design, maybe there is some economies of scale in doing that, just kind of depending, that will always be an option. And I think, you know, looking for opportunities to provide a looped walking trail, so again, as we design parks, right, we're trying to provide amenities for the most amount of people. Playground and the vertical stuff generally gets the most fanfare and most attention, but walking paths, that makes sense, serve, can serve a completely different population, so, I think there's opportunities to look at that in that next phase of design as well, and doing like, you know, some limestone screenings, and you know, lots of, lots of what I'll say, rural trail systems, use different surfacing other than concrete, even if it's interim, I think there's opportunity to do that if the city was desirable.
I missed it, but the breaking ground to completion of a full project, what's the estimated time?
I think your, your biggest, you know, critical path item in your schedule for some of it is gonna be some of the, is gonna be playground equipment. I think doing some of the, you know, the site work, the utilities and grading and all of those things is relatively straightforward, but I'd estimate, and Callie and Ben, so you guys can confirm or oppose, but we're probably eight months, eight to twelve months.
For all stages?
No, that's just for the first phase.
Well, just the entire? Well, just the, the entire.
From a construction perspective, I, I mean, it would take twelve, thirteen months if you did it all at once.
Lance, can I zoom out a bit and speak to that a bit more?
Of course.
We, so as we started putting this together, we always kind of had this idea that this could be a ten year build out. No one anticipated spending eleven million dollars all at once, so, you know, we, phase one A and one B potentially combined if we get the grant and if we can really get the cost right. And as you said, eight to twelve months there, so in a perfect world, if we went that route, let's call that Plan A, you know, we could start building this probably in the summer of next year and hopefully it would be open by the summer of the following year, so twenty twenty six, late spring, early summer, if everything hit, you know, right, that could be realistic. We're still a ways away, but we're closer than we ever have been.
Right. You just see it beyond, you just put partial up, I mean, it becomes a.
Construction zone.
Yeah, it becomes that. That ice rink in New York, it took two decades to build.
It won't take that long, you want big pops, as I'm told by P E C, so this first phase, that'd be a real big pop, right? And then maybe you wait three or four or five years and then you go to the next big pop, which could be the amphitheater. So we wouldn't want there to be perpetual construction out there, I totally agree with that. Whatever we start building next year presumably finish it, you know, spring, summer of twenty twenty six, we wouldn't do any more work out there for three, four, five, six more years, depending on how big phase one is, you know?
Maybe post some vision boards out there about what they will.
Great idea. I love that, just to keep enthusiasm.
Yes, we've, we've done that in a number of communities on large park projects where you do a project, everybody loves it, it's brand new for a few years, and then you do another project on the site, a future phase, and everybody loves to park again and it generates all those feelings of good community willing as it should. So phased park projects with careful attention to not impede on the existing improved areas while you're constructing others is a strategy that we've seen used multiple times in multiple communities.
No, I was, I'm sorry.
As I took my four dollars and just left them in the park.
Doggy park.
Just call Craig.
We're, we're camera, we'll see.
I did take the dog calls in Sterling, we're a little larger here, we got more staff, so someone else will need.
And I'm receiving into those calls in communities too, so. But yeah, they'll just be resident dog park dogs.
If you don't have a dog, do come play with it.
That's right. No one wants to bring their dog to the dog park and you just have no other dogs there, so that'll never be an issue.
We're, we're working on, P E C is working on a brochure for us with some content they've sent over to help us try to raise some private capital. We see a lot of naming rights and stuff associated with parks. There's a, there's a park in Andover that got over a half million dollar donation for the naming rights to their amphitheater, so I mean, there's, there's some capital that can be raised, we're going to try to do that. We've got some philanthropic families and nonprofits and stuff in our region that'll hopefully support this. So, you know, we've got some opportunity here to, to stretch the dollar a little further. We get the grant, that's tremendous. We'll know more here in the coming weeks, so. The holiday season's going to come, we're going to kind of take a break from this for the next several weeks. As January comes, and I'm getting into the next steps here, as January rolls around, we'll start looking at what full design looks like, whether we do a design build process using this master plan as a framework, or if we solicit cost and qualifications for design, full designs, do that and then request for bids to do hire prime contractor to come and build the project. I'm still kind of teetering back and forth in my mind how I would like to do that, so January will start, we'll kind of pick up where we're leaving off here today.
You guys got to remember, this park's a day park, not a night park, there will be lighting in it. Unless we do a Christmas thing with you here out there.
A very small amount of lighting, really just for security purposes because of the investment we've made at Linear Park. We don't feel like this needs to be a nighttime park, we want to encourage second and third shifters that need to get out to exercise and stuff to go take advantage of the investment we made here at Linear Park with the lighting around the Prairie Sunset Trail. Lighting is very, very expensive. Just came out of a project meeting right before this one, we're looking at lighting thirteen hundred linear feet of roadway and it costs a hundred thousand dollars, so it's just not cheap.
So in the winter months, when it's dark outside of the block, you're done at this park?
We'll see a flash one.
Thank you guys, this is Kenal. Hello.
We appreciate it, having the opportunity to work on it, so, and if you guys think of any other questions, then you ask Craig, if Craig can't answer them, which I'm guessing he probably can, he'll, he'll holler at us, so.
Thank you.
I ask Kelly, Vince, thank you so much for being here, tremendous. Do you want to say your mysteries before?
I don't, I mean, do you guys want to share any more dialogue about this? Questions, comments, things that we can kind of incorporate into our brain matter as we continue forward in the process? We hear a few things, but mostly we listen.
I would just, I guess I would just ask kind of what the average upkeep costs are of some of the dog parks that you've had, just because we're going to have to continue those improvements as the advocates use, so like just a general cost, like yearly, annually?
One of the things I've looked at is, I mean, we've got, I know we're here on the pavilion con, maybe break that down into thirds. So if we did a pavilion that was two thirds of the size that's in the design, see what the cost difference will be and then what a third would be, just to take a look at that. You know, it's a pretty big ticket item, you look at the list. I don't know if Wapo has money for sidewalks for parks, but.
Lance could deal with Wapo. No, I, Mayor, I've started kind of thinking about what are the things that you would kind of have to build together? You couldn't build this before, after that, just because of timing. The pavilion, you kind of have to build it at the beginning. It's not like you could build the playground equipment under it and then the pavilion, that would be a physical challenge. I understand that, let me finish my comment. But if you could do like the, the food truck plaza, you know, that one you could cut out, you know, it wouldn't have to be built at the front end, or if you look at some of the other items that are kind of standalone, those are some areas where if you guys were like, yay, we need to get this down to X million dollars, we could start kind of picking those items out that timing is maybe less important. So those are kind of the brainstorming I've done, just to try to figure out where we might be able to refine, if that's the route you guys want to go. The rentable space, I mean, gosh, it would be nice to have, but kind of piecemealing some of those things out so you, you could tweak on it from a budgetary standpoint.
We have that, do a brick care along that one.
Yes. And we, I mean, we're working on sizing a bond that includes not just a park project, but some water projects and our skater system, so, you know, it'll be an interesting conversation as we roll around in the quarter one of twenty twenty five.
The only other comment I would have is something that somebody shared with me in terms of the amount of structures and things that are in this, nine acres. That somebody that's done a lot of parks and been around all the things, the comment was, that's a lot of structure to put in nine acres and, and I'm not trying to poo-poo anything, but I just think that if, if we have the twenty acres we originally had, people better, but that's more on the bridge, but I, I just think in terms of the cost on this thing, there's probably, there's probably three or four major things that we can look at in terms of variables before we make the final decision, and that's all I'm interested in, is that we can have options presented to us that do this and do that. Because that, that pavilion at the price in here, you know, that's pretty close to eighty percent of the playground equipment, it's a pretty number, so.
When we get into full design, you know, we'll be able to get really particular on an exa, on exactly what you're mentioning. That might be maybe one step outside of what we've asked these guys to do, but we'll have to really sharpen the pencil and that pavilion could get smaller. Were you talking more about play equipment or just all vertical stuff?
I'm just, just. Spending money on playground equipment.
Are you talking about the boathouse?
Yeah, it was other, it was other structures.
Right.
In the out years, but I mean, it's a, a lot of structures there.
It's a lot.
Just comments. Yeah, appreciate you guys' work. Any other comments? We have exceeded our six events. Any other, really quickly, any individual comments you'd like to make?
I just want to ask Keith who his barber is, I think we'll see him.
I know a good barber, I'll tell you that. Any else?
Nope.
I would just remind everyone that find a net and tree and pick up a net and help a family, I've got a few of the three hundred and seventy four kids have needs for Christmas that don't have anything, we don't step up and do that, so appreciate everybody doing that as well. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting in just a second. Keep the seconds always in favor of the law. Being adjourned, over.